Let me type your tapes.
Okay. Send me out.
I think they're in the category.
Yeah. Are you on a nineteen eighty-four?
Are you not? Squeeze box. Push the record.
Eighty-four, eighty-five, but I've been there then, yeah, that's my junior year of high school.
There is a video.
And where is it?
Rusty Under Chuck Yeller. I think Darren's on there. It's some Darren.
Good one.
But go to, go to YouTube, tap in, it's eighty-four, eighty-five. And I, I swear there are two on there. They say.
Yeah, that's mine.
And y'all are singing.
Are you?
Oh, yeah. Mr. Riddler shot that video.
Yeah. That's a cool video.
I didn't know it was only two minutes. I didn't know it was only two.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I said more.
How are you, girl? Very good. No, well, that's.
You saying me?
Yeah, man. Yeah.
How are you, Ms. Blainford?
Oh, well, I'm doing fine. How are you, Mr. Rex?
I'm good.
Has it slowed down for you today?
It is.
Is he busy or what?
Always. Oh, it's. I'm just kidding with that.
Yeah. I had it turned down whenever he came in anyway.
I like these here tables. Fancy. That place we do or right behind there.
There.
Not bigger than that much.
Yeah, I can hear it, dude.
All right. All right, so let's start the public hearing. Uh, we have a public hearing, uh, on the second reading of the ordinance updating the wastewater regulations. Uh, is there anyone here, uh, that would like to address the council on the wastewater regulations? Have not received any phone call? Has any board members received any phone calls?
No.
Okay. Have not received any, uh, and, and just a reminder, uh, this is something that we have to do periodically. MTA has worked with, uh, our wastewater plant operator, Mr. Blainford. And, uh, they came up with this. We had the first reading, I mean, that really not anything we, we could do really if we wanted to. It's gotta be done, so. So, hearing, uh, no issues and no one here, uh, to object to anything about the, uh, public hearing on the wastewater regulations. Then we will, uh, close the public hearing and we will call a meeting order. If you would, please stand for prayer and play the role. Dear gracious heavenly Father, we thank for this day and all the many blessings, Lord. We thank you once again, uh, for allowing us as a council to come together, Lord, uh, and, Lord, and we pray that we do everything in accordance with our will, Lord. We pray that you give us the wisdom and knowledge, uh, that it takes to lead our community in the right direction. We pray for our country, men and women that serve, especially the ones on the phone, so we can put, uh, bring them back home safe and sound. Be that with, and also we pray for doctors or scientists, uh, that, uh, how well they've done and, and we pray that our communities are able to get this vaccine out, uh, to the folks as quickly as possible, as safe as possible. For the families that have lost loved ones, uh, and through this COVID-nineteen, uh, virus, Lord, we pray that you put them in a calm, uh, hand, uh, and comfort them, so, you know, give us a rest. Christ remember, amen. Chief Vettles, you lead us to pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just wanna do a sound check. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Loud and clear.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, um. Roll call, Ms. Vettles.
Alderman Blainford?
Here.
Alderman Speck?
Present.
Alderman Clough?
Present.
Alderman Coleman?
Present.
Alderman Dale?
Present.
Vice Mayor Dodson?
Present.
Hoppins.
Oh, presidents, uh, and, uh, as the email that I sent out, the government has extended the, uh, electric meetings, uh, until later dates, so we have a option to be present or electronically, uh, either by Zoom or by conference call. That's what we chose here tonight, so. Uh, need a motion to approve the minutes of last month's meeting, please.
So, would you move?
Motion made by Alderman Chris Speck, second by Alderman John Clough. Any discussion?
I was gonna say, when you turn that around to the agency, does it still the audience or does it matter?
Well.
It might have been.
Well, we got people that we probably could have given, turn it around.
Not discussing this motion, so.
Okay. We got a motion in a second. All four of the votes are letting know to say aye?
Aye.
All the polls are outside? Motion passed. All right, is there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing done, I may, uh, need, uh, someone to make a motion to accept the agenda as is.
So, move.
Motion made by Alderman Rex Dale.
Second.
Second, uh, Vice Mayor Ken Dodson. Any discussion? All four of the votes are letting know to say aye?
Aye.
All the poll, all the polls are outside, motion passed. I don't know, one, under old business, uh, water leak contract, Mr. William Ridley. Come on that, Mr. Ridley, just push that button there. Thank you.
Thank you again for having invited, Mayor Alderman. I've talked with you last month about the program and I built your final pricing and contract for you. Uh, I've talked with the mayor and, uh, it looks like if we can do two thousand dollars as a limit for your customers,
a man.
they'll give them two thousand dollars in coverage, uh, two times per year. And so they get two claims in each calendar year, each twelve-month period. And the total cost to your customer after your administrative fee, the city charges, it's two dollars and forty-five cents. Of course, uh, as we talked about last time, your customer can opt out of the program at any time. So if someone's not happy with the program, they don't want the coverage, they can opt out and, uh, and not be charged any longer. If they do opt out in the first thirty days of the contract, um, after they're gonna get several notices, then, uh, they will get a full refund of the two dollars and forty-five cents. So, uh, the way we've implemented the program is to start, uh, July first to give us plenty of time to give all your customers notices and assist you with that. So, with that said, I'll, I'll be quiet and see if you have any questions for me.
Thank you, Mr. Ridley. Is there any questions, uh, if you remember, we had, uh, discussion last month about water leak relief? And, and what this program's all about is, uh, when customers have a water leak, um, normally they call here for an adjustment. That, that is revenue and that the city of Livingston, uh, will lose. Uh, and it came up over the, that averaged, uh, about fifty thousand dollars a year of revenue that the city has lost out on. If we go with water leak relief, uh, customers, uh, will be, uh, have, uh, and I wanna be really clear on this. Their water bill will go up an additional, what do you have, two dollars and what?
Two dollars and forty-five cents.
It will be an extra two dollars and forty-five cents. However, the city, uh, will continue to get the revenue of the lost revenue that has been lost in the past. But there will be, uh, two dollars and, uh, forty-seven cents, like you said, added to the bills. Also, the program, uh, that we discussed last month is, it is an opt-out program. If anybody that wants to, uh, opt out of the program can do so, uh, at no cost and no additional fees. Uh, if they have an issue, uh, uh, with, uh, maybe perhaps something that didn't do go as they wanted to, uh, water leak relief has, uh, real people on the phone, and if they're not going to answer and service, they will take care of this. Uh, if we pass this and, uh, if that's what the board chooses to do, then the adjustments that city has no longer exist. And that, uh, other than, uh, for sprinkler systems, uh, or for perhaps somebody filling up their pool, uh, that supercharge would be took off. But, uh, but from now on, they would have two of these a year. Uh, and, and really, what, what Mr. Ridley has explained to me, uh, sometimes the reason that I, I suggested too, because sometimes you have some bleed over on the bills. So the way we read, it could possibly get a reading in the middle of the month, which would cause a bleed over on, in the, in the next month. And according to Mr. Ridley, that would just be one, uh, one, one reading or, or cycle. So there would be another one that if you had another, uh, water leak, you would be able to use that. And if there was bleed over on that one, that would complete your two cycles.
That's correct.
And, uh, the, the reason I wanna do that, again, the way we read, uh, is depends on when it goes in the computer. We could catch you right in the middle of a leak. So it would be an additional two, two dollars forty cents, uh, you say forty cents?
Two dollars forty-five.
Two forty-five, let me write that down now. Two dollars and forty-five cents. Um, and, uh, the fires will go out, uh, to all the customers that is inside of our water utility district. Uh, the public will certainly know, uh, our utility customers will know, uh, what the story is if, if they opt out. Uh, however, there will not be any release, relief for them unless we're in those circumstances. So that's, that's where we are.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. This, uh, uh, Alderman Clough. Typically, when people call for relief, are, are they usually given it?
Yes, Alderman Clough, uh, as long as they meet the terms and conditions, which says that they have to do something to stop the leak within ten days of discovery.
I can hear.
Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, as long as they meet the, there's terms and conditions to the contract and as long as the customer meets the terms and conditions, uh, which basically says that if they discover a leak, they have to turn off the source of the leak within ten days of discovery. So if I walk into my living room and my pipe is busted, I need to go cut the water off within ten days. If, if they just decide to go on vacation and leave the water running, running, then of course we're not gonna cover a claim that's, you know, massive because they didn't do anything to correct the issue. Uh, a couple of things we don't cover are sprinkler systems. If your sprinkler system has a leak, uh, that's excluded from the, the coverage and swimming pools being filled up. Those are some things that are specified in the terms and conditions. Most of our claims are covered. It's very rare that we'll have a claim, uh, that is non-covered. Uh, it could be that somebody, uh, doesn't report the claim for six months. In that case, uh, we're not gonna cover the claim. They have to report the claim, uh, as soon as they're notified of the leak or within a reasonable time period. And we judge that as at least thirty days from the time they receive their water bill. If they've already paid it and six months goes by, then of course we're, uh, too late then. We've got about a ninety-eight percent retention rate, ninety-seven to ninety-eight percent retention rate when the cities and utilities that we, uh, are involved with now. Folks that, uh, have the coverage, they see the benefit of it and they stay in the program for the most part.
Kelly, I, I know you said you were saying you came here, uh, did you get any?
I can now.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I, I.
Go ahead, Kelly.
I have a couple of questions. Um, Mr. Ridley, does the city of Crossville participate in your program?
They do, that's correct.
Okay. Um, and your average retention is roughly ninety-eight, ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent, correct?
That's correct. It, it, we have six utilities in the program currently, and so that's an average over all six utilities.
Okay, so it, we have roughly forty-nine hundred water customers in the city. So if I take, if I take four hundred customers times two dollars and forty-five cents per month, times twelve months, you're gonna collect a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars roughly. And that's assuming percent retention and you're saying your average is ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent. And the city of Livingston's average loss revenue per year is around fifty thousand dollars. Um, the math's not, hey, Mr. Ridley?
Sure. I understand, uh, so we have, we have a partner in Plateau Insurance and their actuaries looked at your, uh, losses. And your last year's losses were around sixty-five thousand dollars, uh, and, and that was based on a twenty percent increase from the year before. So we cross, we cross the program based on your losses and then of course we have some cost. We have a cost.
Well, if, if we charge our customers two dollars and forty-five cents, that's twenty-nine dollars a year. Now, the city could consider, in my opinion, implementing some kind of a one dollar per month fee, forty-nine hundred customers, that gets you close to what our lost revenue is and we save money for our residents and we cover the lost revenue.
Sure.
Uh, I'm not sure what you're doing. You've got a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars in revenue to cover my sixty-five thousand dollar average loss. I can't believe that your reinsurance with Plateau is costing you that difference. To me, it's not a win-win for my, for, for my view to our citizens.
Sure. I, I promise you, there's not that much profit. I think the number I looked at when, uh, pricing this was thirty-seven hundred water customers. And, and somebody, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, there was thirty-seven hundred water customers in Livingston. And of the two dollars and forty-five cents, thirty cents of that fee is staying with the city of Livingston as an administrative fee. Uh, so, so we're actually only collecting two dollars and fifteen cents. Uh, and if, if you have thirty-seven hundred customers and, you know, five.
Okay, I think we need to correct that. My, my information says we have forty-five to forty-nine hundred customers.
That's, that's right.
Okay.
Well, and, and, uh, in any, any event, what you, what you said is a good idea, that why can't the city just implement an additional charge and do this themselves? And we've had several cities say the same thing. And the problem is the state legislator wrote a specific statute, uh, that said that the cities cannot do this on their own. They have to contract with a third-party company because the city is not allowed legally to be in an insurance-type business. And, uh, so. We're not making that much profit. I promise you, the, uh, the, the cost of the program, you know, goes to pay our customer service representatives, the claims.
Well, I, I respect that, but you wouldn't be in business if you weren't in business to make money.
Absolutely. I agree with that.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. And, and I, I've taken these numbers and I've worked them as many ways as possible and tried to get your prices down as much as I can. And we fought with Plateau on this to, to, to bring those actuaries down and, and get your pricing as good as it can. And that was with a lot of help from your city staff and, and all the work they did.
I appreciate, I appreciate that. I, I'm not sure if anybody else has put the pencil to it. To me, it's, that makes sense.
This is, uh, this is Alderman Clough, uh, and I have a question for, um, Mayor Hayes. Um, Curtis, can you tell me, uh, approximately, um, how many of those customers get a surprise, uh, bill from a, a significant water leak and, and actually pay it? In other words, I, I'd like to know, um, the number of customers that actually would benefit. Now, you've told, you've told us that the city loses fifty to sixty-five thousand dollars in revenue. Um, but what would be the selling point to the average customer? And in other words, are there, are there several hundred people every year that end up paying a water bill of hundreds of dollars because of a leak that the city decides not to forgive? Or are the majority of those leaks forgiven by the city? So, so what's in it for the customer? If people aren't having to pay that anyway, and if the, like, uh, Kelly pointed out, if this is purely to cover, um, sixty-five thousand dollars of loss for the city, I would, I would have to agree, uh, we'd be better off just going and buying a, an insurance policy that covers the city for sixty-five thousand dollars a year. You could get that for a whole lot less than, you know, the, the proposed, uh, whatever that comes to, thirty thousand dollars a year. Probably would cost you a, a small fraction of that.
All right, so, so you've asked a couple of different questions.
That's right.
The way the system is, the way it works right now, if, if a customer in our utility district has a water leak, they do get an adjustment, okay? And we do that by averaging the high bill in the five of their other bills. It's six months' worth of bills and it could be an adjustment. Now, I mean, who knows, uh, what their utility bill is when they get there? It could be, uh, five hundred dollars, it could be, uh, two thousand dollars. But, so we make that adjustment and try to give you, uh, one a year, uh, and, uh, we, we, we make sure the customer understands that. Uh, there are times that if, if it is in fact led over to that, they could get two. Uh, but, uh, to answer your question, how many people had to actually pay that bill? I, I can answer that right now. Now, how many folks has got adjustments, uh, over the last twelve months? And I, I would say there's probably fifty, forty to fifty percent, if not higher. Uh, so that would answer your question about then, is there a couple of hundred folks that gets adjusted? Sure. I mean, if, if you're in a water utility district and you have a water leak and you call in, like, like most utilities, we're gonna give you an adjustment. Uh, the, 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 the fact of the matter is, uh, and it's certainly up to the board to do, but this is an insurance policy. And it's an insurance policy for the city. Uh, uh, and I, I had never heard of, of this type of business before. Now, I, I can certainly do some more investigating if, if that's what, if that's what the board wants to do. But I, I've just simply not, not, not heard of, of a deal like that. It is a, uh, in my opinion, it is a, uh, uh, an insurance, uh, policy for the city and for the customer.
Okay, so I have a follow-up question then. If, uh, if we put this in, uh, into effect and there are customers that opt out, so they're not participating in this insurance plan, and then they call the city for relief, will they be given the relief? Will they be given the six-month average? Or they, will they be said, will they be told, nope, you've got a fifteen hundred dollar bill you gotta pay?
Well, that's what we said, that if we're gonna do this, then the adjustments that we do here will no longer be. And, uh, that, that's, I mean, when you, if the city, uh, decides to opt into this program, uh, that's what the whole program is designed for. Uh, if, if we was gonna continue to do it this way, then I would not, we would not, uh, need Mr. Ridley's service. It was just, uh, when I talked to Mr. Ridley, I thought it would be a good opportunity, uh, to get some, uh, extra revenue, uh, new revenue into the water system, uh, that we didn't, hadn't had, uh, and give the customers an insurance policy as well. Uh, that's the way I see it, uh, but, uh, and, and I, I, I've, I've, I've been doing this for a while now. I've, I've just not heard of a system, uh, or an insurance company that comes in and says, uh, that, hey, here's what we got. Mr. Ridley was the first that I've seen. And I've been to several conferences of, of TML across the state of Tennessee and I've just not seen it. And that may be there, Doc, uh, but I've not seen.
You know, I, I'm just, I'm just trying to think from the constituent standpoint of this is a flat fee as opposed to a percentage. Whereas, you know, if my water bill is, you know, a hundred dollars a month, I don't care that there's two dollars and fifty cents added. But if somebody's water bill is twenty dollars a month, they may not like a twelve percent increase?
Mayor, if I may point out, I, I want to, to Mr. Alderman's point, uh, we're taking the risk. And if you do have a hundred thousand dollars in leaks or a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in leaks, we're gonna pay those. And, and we're guaranteeing your price. This isn't like insurance, the increase is when you make a claim, there's no deductible. And we're guaranteeing that, uh, two dollar and fifteen cent premium that's coming to our company, thirty cents going to the city. Uh, we're guaranteed that right for two years, no matter what your claims look like. And I want to apologize, uh, to the Alderman. I did get your numbers here, I pulled them back up on my phone and, and you were correct. It is, you know your numbers and it is four thousand eight hundred and forty-four water customers. And that's what we did the, uh, did the actuary report based upon.
Oh, I have another quick question to, um, our mayor. And is, is, um, the city attorney, Meadows, there?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, is it legal? Would it be legal for us to pass on a one dollar per month or a one dollar and ten cent per month recovery fee on our water bills? Which, is that, I, I, I'm, I'm concerned that Mr. Ridley tells us that's not legal. I'm not, maybe I'm confused, but is there, is there anything legal about that?
And I've got a, uh, an opinion from MTA's attorneys, and I'm happy to provide, uh, your city attorney that addresses that very issue. Cause this is not the first time that question has came up, as you can imagine. And I'll be happy to give that to him and, and help you, provide you with that statute as well.
So, Mr. Madison, have we looked at the legality of that?
I have not looked at that specific issue, Alderman Coleman. I'll be glad to look into it if the city, uh, asks me to do that. I, I reviewed the contract that was presented, uh, that, that was presented to the board and I, and I don't have any issues with the legality or, or form of the contract. But as far as the question you're asking, I'll be glad to look further into that if the city wants me to.
Oh, thank you. I mean, I, I guess the reason, that if we charge a dollar and a quarter or whatever and we have forty-five hundred, forty-nine hundred customers, why do we need an insurance policy? We just collected enough revenue to offset the average mis, uh, revenue. So I, I mean, this is why I have more questions than I do, uh, I have to. I'd like to know the legality, uh, question where I'm prepared to vote on this.
John, uh, Mr. Ridley's gonna pass that MTA study, uh, over. Uh, can you, uh, make sure all the board members have it included themselves, please?
Yes.
Okay. Is that okay, Kelly?
Sure, yes.
Okay. All right, uh, does the, is there any, uh, questions, uh, for Mr. Ridley?
Yeah, I have, uh, two more, Mr. Ridley. On the exclusions, it's got, um, more than one occurrence per. Yeah, I have two more, Mr. Ridley. On the exclusions, it's got, um, more than one occurrence per couple of months, or we're talking about two claims per year or more?
Yes, sir. That was on the contract that I gave you as a sample, and I've updated that for tonight.
Push button.
I'm sorry. I've updated that. It was on the old contract. It was a sample. And I've changed that to where it's two, because I wasn't sure at the last meeting which, whether you went one claim a year or two claims a year.
Yeah, and then the other thing was, it says natural act or is that included?
Like, if a, if a tornado, uh, a tornado came through and, and destroyed your house and there was a water leak based on the tornado, that'd be a natural act. But, uh, we specifically do cover frozen, frozen lines. So, if your, if your line falls out and breaks as a result of a freeze, that is a covered situation. I had a friend of mine last week, I don't know if y'all know Randy York, he's an attorney in Cookeville, Crossville, he called me. He had a twenty-five-hundred-dollar leak at his house from a frozen line, and he was in our program and covered his line. I don't think he'd mind me telling you that.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, so, uh, good discussion there. Is there any action, uh, that needs to be took? We're gonna take this under advisement. Bring it back up next month, we're gonna take action now.
Yes, everything we heard, I would like to know the legality of this. I pick a motion and table this to next month.
Motion made by Alderman Sp, the table list to next month.
Second.
Second, uh, second by Alderman Rex Dale. Any discussion? All for the motion, let it know by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, right side? Motion passed. We'll put it on the agenda for next month.
Thank you. I'll see you all next month.
Yeah, thank you. John, in the meantime, if you can, uh, get a, uh, copy of the MTS from Mr. Ridley and forward that on to the board and myself for the big discussion.
Thank you.
All right, item number two, uh, second reading on the ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash two dash one. Uh, it's a second reading on the ordinance updating the wastewater regulations. Uh, of course, we, uh, passed that, uh, last month in the first reading. Would not have any, uh, any calls. Uh, board members say they haven't had any calls, so I just made a motion to approve the second reading on the ordinance. Motion made by Vice Mayor Ken Dodson.
Yes, sir.
Second by Alderman Chris Spack. Any discussion? All for the motion, let it know by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, right side? Motion passed. Item number one under new business, uh, downtown revitalization, Mr. Ray Evans. Ray?
Yes, sir. Uh, good, good evening, Mayor and Alderman. Um, after a lull of a couple of months, your downtown revitalization committee, uh, has been rather, uh, active, uh, over the last bit. We have several things for you to consider tonight. Um, the first is consideration of a facade improvement grants program in the total amount of twenty-five thousand dollars utilizing available revenue from the state sales tax, uh, rebate fund. And, uh, this, uh, item was unanimously approved by the, uh, Downtown Revitalization Committee at its meeting last Friday. Uh, the intent here is to, um, um, have a grant program that would be between ten and twelve thousand, five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we have two grants available for owners of property within the, um, sales tax rebate district, which is primarily the, the square and downtown, uh, down south Church Street. Uh, that would be substantial improvements to the, um, uh, storefront of existing buildings. And that would convert those to a, uh, nineteen-sixty or pre-nineteen-sixty condition. Uh, uh, we have, uh, uh, numerous requirements as far as, uh, what the facades would look like. Uh, it would also apply to, uh, rear facades if they were visible from a public street. Uh, we, we're looking for, as opposed to, to the facade back program that we had two years ago, uh, that provided, uh, all these and, and several other, uh, sort of minor upgrades. We're looking for a much higher impact this time than, than in, uh, in previous years. Um, and, um, uh, we have those funds available in the state sales tax rebate fund and would, um, ask your, uh, approval to proceed forward with that program.
Okay, uh, so we need to, uh, have a motion, uh, to allow there to be a facade grant of twenty-five thousand dollars is what the, the motion need to be. Do you wanna hear a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion to approve by Alderman Chris Spack. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Ken Dodson. Any discussion?
It's not matching grand or anything like that. We're just borrowing for money.
Yeah, so the, yes, it'd be twenty-five thousand dollars over the DRC. So, uh, okay. Got a motion, second, any more discussion? Rock off, hold this for us.
Alderman Spack?
Yes.
Alderman Clough?
Yes.
Alderman Coleman?
Yes.
Alderman Dale?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dotson?
Yes.
Alderman Northbrook?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passed. Uh, go on with your next item, Ms. Reddick.
Um, maybe the second item, uh, is related to, uh, a program that we had two years ago, uh, the Light in Livingston program. And, uh, as we all know, our citizens have been deprived from such events over the last twelve months. But, but we believe that, uh, later on in the year, uh, we'll have the ability to, uh, uh, resurrect such programs as we had, uh, two years ago that were so, uh, uh, very well received by the citizens of Livingston. So, we are asking, uh, for a not-to-exceed amount of thirty-five thousand dollars, uh, to be granted to the Livingston Main Street program for the resurrection of the Light in Livingston program series in Central Park in the summer and fall of, of, uh, this year. Uh, right now, we anticipate, uh, July, August, September, and October, uh, Saturday in each of those months to have, uh, uh, light performances at, uh, uh, at the, uh, uh, Central Park. Uh, very similar to the, the quality of the, uh, uh, performances that we had, uh, two years ago. Uh, so I would, uh, and this is a not-to-exceed amount. I, I can tell you that, uh, uh, Shannon Council has already been out, uh, soliciting, uh, uh, sponsors for these events. So, uh, we actually anticipate, uh, ultimately a lesser amount than the thirty-five thousand dollars. But, uh, for tonight, I would ask you to approve an amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand.
Question. Uh, Alderman Clough, are we ready to promote large public gatherings starting in July because of COVID?
Right, uh, question, gentlemen. If, if in fact, uh, we are not ready in July, we will postpone that to a, uh, uh, to later in the year.
Reason behind my question was, uh, the email I got earlier today, um, he was at the Tennessee Municipal League proposed meeting in August was postponed to September for that very reason? Is that correct?
Yes, that, that's correct. They thought that, um, um, they thought that, uh, there might be a bit of turnout with the exhibitors and, uh, for the applicants. Uh, however, uh, Doc, I, I know you and, uh, Alderman, uh, Rex Dale know more about this than I do. Obviously, uh, they wrote Johnson and Johnson out. Now, I've talked to, uh, uh, Mr., uh, Andy Lanford, Overton County Health Department. And, uh, it is his wishes that everyone, uh, that would like to be vac, vaccinated, uh, here in Overton County should have an opportunity, uh, by July. Now, that's, that's, you know, that's, that's if everything goes well. Uh, that, that's simply a yes, but I certainly agree with what Mr. Ray Evans has said. If, if there's still a high percentage of Overton Canons, uh, that have not, uh, or in the upper colonel, uh, that has not had, uh, the percentage of vaccinations or not where they should be. It's not a high percentage and it's a low percentage, then that would certainly be moved back. I mean, uh, but, uh, you have to be able to approve these funds so you can, so you have money, uh, to go ahead. You know, these entertainers, they don't take IOUs. So, uh, in order to, uh, uh, to move ahead, uh, we have to go ahead and start looking to some talent now. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, th- this will be out to DRC, man, that's correct. So, uh, Mr. Evans, uh, from the chairman of the DRC is asking, uh, for the release of not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars, uh, for the Main Street program and for entertainment, uh, down to Central Park. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Ken Dodson.
Second.
Second by Alderman Rex Dale. Any discussion?
This, just one quick question. This is money that's already budgeted, right?
Yes. Yes, it, it, it is, uh, Kelly, and this is also the money, uh, that we collect from the sales tax that is generated, uh, out of the zone. The zone that goes above each direction of the courthouse. So, the, this rebate, uh, is where this money's coming from. And Ray, Ray Evans gave a budget to the board, uh, last fiscal year.
Okay. One other quick, one other quick question for Mr. Evans. Um, will we, um, proceed with hosting these events once the local health department, um, deems that large events are safe in our community? Are you gonna use their guidance to help guide your, um, scheduling?
Uh, the answer to that, uh, Alderman Coleman is absolutely. And, and I would also say that, uh, as far as funds are concerned, uh, these are unallocated funds from the, uh, uh, revenues that we've collected, in the, actually in the last three years from the state, uh, sales tax, uh, uh, rebate fund. Uh, uh, but, uh, one good thing about Central Park is that it's outdoors. Uh, we have a great opportunity for social distancing. And, uh, uh, if, if the department is still, uh, uh, necessary, we can certainly do masks as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
If, if we want these entertainers to come in and play and we decide that it's unsafe, or the health department decides it's unsafe.
With that, Mr. Mayor, I would ask for a motion for approval.
Yes, thank you, Ray. Uh, go ahead, David, thank you. What's your question?
If we want these entertainers, the health department or whatever decides it's unsafe, I guess we pay these entertainers regardless.
Yeah, what we do is get an insurance policy on it. Uh, so it'd be, be the same way. I'd have to check on that, that, uh, once we have entertainers coming to Livingston, uh, in the event, uh, inclement weather, most of the time is what the policy may be. Now, during this pandemic, maybe a little bit different, but, so, so we don't lose the whole, the whole, uh, all your investment. You, you get an insurance policy that covers that in your code. Yeah, so, okay, uh, any more discussion? Okay, we have, uh, you got something, Chris? Okay, I've got a motion in the second on the floor. Uh, rock off, hold this for us, please.
Alderman Clough?
Alderman Clough?
Yes.
Alderman Coleman?
Yes.
Alderman Dale?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dotson?
Yes.
Alderman Northbrook?
Yes.
Alderman Spack?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next item, Ms. Reddick.
Yes, sir. The third of four items is, uh, our, uh, contract agreement with Los Design of Natural for the renovations of the courthouse grounds. Uh, you all will remember that we were awarded a Transportation Alternatives program grant from the Tennessee Department of Transportation. Uh, last year, we have, uh, uh, selected Los Design as the firm to sit forward with. Been in negotiations with them for the last couple of months. And, uh, tonight, we would ask that you approve a contract with Los Design in the amount of, of ninety thousand, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, uh, environmental and design, uh, related elements and an additional eighty-three thousand dollars for, uh, construction administration. Uh, the construction administration portion of that will be an eighty-twenty match with TIP, eighty percent of that amount. The ninety thousand, seven hundred and fifty, uh, thousand dollars is a one-hundred percent, uh, 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 local entity, uh, obligation. But also recall that the county has agreed to, uh, cost share with the city in a, in a fifty-fifty, uh, split, uh, for that amount of work. The ninety thousand, seven hundred and fifty was a bit more than we anticipated. Uh, but what we have, have discovered in the process is that because the courthouse is listed on the National Risk Perficial Places, it requires an extra level of, uh, of archaeological, uh, uh, study than, uh, previous projects, uh, have required. And so that's why we were a bit over budget in that regard. So I would ask that, uh, the Board of Mayor and Alderman, uh, uh, approve a contract in the amount of, uh, ninety thousand, seven hundred and fifty for, uh, environmental, uh, issues and design and an additional eighty thousand, uh, for construction, uh, administration services. Uh, also subject due to review by the city attorney on the, uh, uh, various, uh, uh, elements that Los Design has, uh, has subproposed in the contract.
Thank you, Ray. So you've heard, uh, the recommendations, uh, from the chairman of the Downtown Revitalization Committee, Mr. Ray Evans. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation? Motion made by Alderman Chris Spack. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman John Clough. Any discussion?
He was talking about eighty, twenty percent. Who pays the twenty percent?
The city will.
We've got to pay them.
Yes. Again, these funds will come out of the DRC, they come out of the Downtown Revitalization Committee, it's, it's the, 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 our part.
It, it'll come out of the floor.
Yes, that's right. It's the city's money, but it will come out of that, right? That's right. Be prepared to have that. All right, we have a motion in. Someone say something. We got a motion and second on the floor. Is there any more discussion?
Yes, I have one question.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Evans, once these plans are, uh, finalized, will they need approval by the council? Final approval?
Uh, no, sir. Once, uh, basically, these plans are based on the, uh, the plans that were, uh, uh, developed in two thousand and one.
By Ben?
By Ben Page, uh, that was privately funded.
All right.
That we've all seen the, the renderings of and the illustrations of.
Right.
For some time. Uh, but it will not require, uh, uh, coming back to, to council. Uh, it will be, uh, simply viewed by the committee and by, by city staff.
Okay, um, now, I've asked this question before to affirm this, but it does include a lighting package, correct, for the courthouse?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And, and, and so let me also say, uh, it, it does not include the removal of the fountain that is a memorial to, uh, uh, is a memorial to, to, two or three of our local vendors.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any more discussion? Roll call, vote, Miss Phillips.
Alderman Coleman?
Yes.
Alderman Dale?
Yes.
Asmael Dodson?
Yes.
Alderman Harper?
Yes.
Alderman Speck?
Yes.
Alderman Cluff?
Yes.
Motion passed. Next on your agenda, Mr. Evans.
Yes, sir. The last contractual agenda, I might even have two other just information items, but the mayor was, has been developing a plan along with the fire chief for the improvement and upgrade of the street name markers around the courthouse square. And through Temple Electric Company in Decatur, Alabama, we have a proposal to, to change out the existing street name markers, the, the just flat metal panels that we've seen for years, with LED lit street name markers. And we would also include street name markers for all of the court square streets. Recall that, that around the courthouse square, we have East Court Square, West Court Square, et cetera, et cetera, but we have never had street name markers to delineate those four streets. This would include those. It would add a, what I would consider a substantial enhancement of the look and feel of, of the street name markers around the square being lit at night. These markers have a, a shut off that they don't operate during the daytime, only in the evening hours. But we would ask that, and, and again, the, the funds that would be used to purchase and install these street name markers would be the state sales tax rebate fund. And so I would ask approval tonight that the city be allowed to proceed forward with the purchase and installation of these street name markers in the mountain optic city, eighteen thousand dollars.
Have a question.
Go ahead, Ken.
Mr. Evans, time out. Will these lit signs go on? Would it be a decorative post similar to our street lamps like City of Cookland? Can you help me understand that?
Yes, sir. So then we replace the existing green street name markers that are on the mast arms of our traffic signal poles on three of the intersections around the square. So they would actually hang from the mast arm of the, of the traffic poles.
Okay. So just help me, Ken, off the top of my head. We do not have your standard street marker of, I guess, the cast aluminum posts around the square that sign the street markers are on, correct?
That's correct, and that's not unusual. Anytime you have civilized intersections with mast arms, it's not unusual to replace ground mounted street name markers with street name markers that are suspended from the mast arms.
Okay. Thank you. Adieu.
Okay, you've heard the recommendations from the chairman. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation?
I make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Kelly Coleman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Rexdale. Any discussion? Roll call, vote, Miss Phillips.
Alderman Dale?
Yes.
I can't hear.
I can't hear either.
Asmael Dodson?
Yes.
Alderman Harper?
Yes.
Alderman Speck?
Yes.
Alderman Cluff?
Alderman Cluff?
Yes.
Alderman Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you.
Right before you get done, I want you to know that they're putting up the, the side rails on Church Street today.
Next on your agenda, Mr. Evans.
Yes, sir. Two quick items, just updates. Our consultants, Kim, we warned you us that next Friday, excuse me, Friday of the week, we should receive final construction plans for review before they're submitted to TDOT for the multi-boat access grant project that will improve pedestrian activity and accessibility down Main Street, East Main Street and East Broad Street. Looking forward to seeing those and looking forward to that project. Last item that I have is the safety rail project on North Church Street. You may have seen that we have a series of orange homes on the sidewalk on North Church Street in front of the businesses and down toward the Speck Funeral Home. That's because we have bored the, the concrete in, in those locations and that TCAT has in fact constructed the safety rails that are replacing the old Latinated and very unsafe safety rails that have been there for biddy, biddy years. We think that project will, will pursue forward in, in the very near future. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Evans. Item number two, Mr. Greg Davenport, Jalen Warford, and Tiffany. Greg, you there?
Down here.
All right.
Thank you, Curtis. Mayor and Alderman, Curtis asked me to speak to you tonight about the status of the water system leakage. And from an engineering and planning and technical perspective, we are assimilating maps of your system right now so that we can hopefully split parts of the downtown system into zones, so that we can try to assess which zones have the worst leakage, so that when we attempt to find these leaks or hire outside consultants, we can focus our efforts instead of walking all over the distribution system. The systems in Hillam and Monroe are independent and it'll be easier to assess from a leakage percentage, although they are quite protracted, being out in rural areas. And the way we'll do that is we will take and turn out the pumps that feed those systems and measure the fall in the water tanks at night when there's very little usage, and that should approximate the system leakage in those areas. So the plan moving forward is to attempt to isolate your system in the zones in the downtown area and then perform nighttime testing. Now, one of the things that's a big challenge for all parties involved is we can reach a map, we can say, okay, if we shut this valve right here, it should isolate these two areas. But oftentimes, there's water lines that are, maybe small lines that are interconnected that no one knows about. So it's not as easy as just picking a, a boundary on a map and shutting valves. There's quite a bit of fieldwork that has to go into that. So I think in the next thirty days, we'll have this figured out and we'll be able to go ahead and start assessing some of the nighttime leakage in these areas. After that, we propose to put a report together that prioritizes the leakage areas. At that point, we'll sit down with the city and speak with you about hiring leak detectors, either through bidding those services out or through attempted to use the equipment the city has now.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport. Is there any questions for Mr. Greg Davenport? Here none. Greg, do you have anything else to report to the board?
I don't, Mayor. We're looking forward to getting hold of this project and I'm interested to hear kind of how the, the in-house progress has, has panned out or is panning out.
Okay, well, I'll put you on the agenda for next month. Is that, you think that's sufficient to be back on in April?
We can. There's no problem with that. And I'll, by then, I'll have these, your system cut into pieces and we'll look at, I'll just give a short report on how things are moving.
Okay, also, I'll get a report from Jerry Dale. He'll be here as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
All right. Item number three, the U.S. Census Report, Mr. Kevin Flannery.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Alderman, for having me this evening. I know for the last few years, you all have been used to, I guess, dealing with Sherri Jackson, our partnership specialist over in Hutton County, as far as the police, that's where she lives.
Make sure you speak into the mic.
Sorry, can y'all hear me okay?
They can now, so just.
Okay, sorry about that. Anyway, Sherri Jackson's our partnership specialist who's worked this area for the last few years. I'm actually out of Johnson City, but I supervise everything east of Nashville. As you all remember, the census, we started sending mailings out around March fifteenth, March twelfth, I think, maybe the first ones went out, Tennessee. Official kickoff date was April first. People could do it online prior to that if they received their card in the mail. We wrap up date for that was going to be July thirty-first, or thirty-third, whatever the end of July is. And because of COVID, obviously, things got changed in our operational timeline. We actually wrapped up operations on October fifteenth. Now, the good thing is that gave us time to count more people to do mobile questionnaire assistance, non-response follow-up operations lasted a little bit longer than it began August, I believe, eleventh. It ran until October fifteenth. So that actually gave us the time, more time than we obviously needed. Generally, I'll tell you all kind of the timeline. I know that's what everybody's question is. I know you don't need a complete explanation of the census tonight. You guys want to get kind of to the meat of it. Generally, since seventeen ninety, we have those, numbers have to be reported to the President by the end of December of that year, whenever the decennial census was. Usually by the end of March is when that local information, the numbers are released to local communities for redistricting, reapportionment. Obviously, this would delay. They, they usually have, our enumerators are out till the end of July. That gives until the end of December for these numbers to be calculated within the year of. We still hope to try to get that done on the same timeline, but it's harder when you took, had a two or three additional months of counting the U.S. population. So as of right now, September first will be when that information is reported, which I talked to the mayor about this earlier. But I can, I can tell you all a little bit about response rates. I'm sure Sherri had up until end of her term. United States, sixty-seven percent of the people responded, now this is self-response only, don't, don't get alarmed about that number being low. That's people who responded online, by phone, through the mail, as a percentage of households. Tennessee, the number was sixty-six percent. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about self-response in just a second, so you know what I'm talking about. Overton County, just so you all have perspective, for, for this area was fifty-eight point two percent, and Livingston was at fifty-nine point nine percent. So when I say self-response, that means people who took their five, six minutes, what, ten minutes, whatever it took them to complete their nine questions on their survey, people who went ahead and did that themselves. So that's basically six out of ten households here had done that. Following that, we had other operations going on as well. We had what we call non-response follow-up operations, and that's the folks you all would consider door-to-door, or people who are going to have those and actually interviewing people in person nationwide. They had visited ninety-nine percent, over ninety-nine percent of the households that they were tasked with. Now, does that mean, and I'm, I'm, I'll just give you straight facts. So if you think that ninety-nine percent of the people in the country were counted, no, that is not what happened. Ninety-nine percent of households that were listed, that they were tasked with, were visited by census personnel. Those numbers on self-response, they also don't include group quarters. So group quarters housing would be like any group of people who live under one area who aren't necessarily related. This could be nursing homes, this could be assisted living centers, it could be jails, correctional facilities, dormitories. Those do not count on those numbers. So your lowest number for Livingston is fifty-nine point nine percent had responded. All that other stuff I just listed has not been counted, has been counted, it's not been calculated yet. So, does that make sense? Any other questions about that, about the methodology on that?
Yeah, I, I don't have any questions. The, the man, thank you for the report. I think you, you hit all the highlights. I just want to make sure that when will the final numbers be counted? Because, I mean, we certainly don't want to go under what we currently have from 2010. I, I truly believe we've had some growth in the, in the corporate limits of Livingston. So in the event these numbers come back low, and I, I know several, several years ago, we did a special census. We did it in-house. How's that process work? Can you just quickly tell me Cliff's Notes version of how that works?
Yeah, so, so y'all had already done that in Livingston in the past? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. So I've looked at, I've looked into some of that, because you had mentioned it earlier, you know, because you had a bad feeling that, you know, catch those numbers didn't turn out where you wanted them. The option that I've seen is a count, question, resolution, and that's an option you have where, that you could appeal or do another count. I, I would say, I wouldn't be too concerned with that yet. I would wait until the numbers come out, obviously, they might be better than what you think. I can tell you some numbers like, so the decennial census is what we're talking about here, and that's what's obviously done every ten years. We also do an American Community Survey every year of at least three and a half million homes, and that's where we get a lot more information than you do from those eight or nine questions that are on the decennial. So I'll just give you an idea, some of the numbers I had pulled up here, now this is off the American Community Survey estimates. I did not have Livingston on here, I had Overton County, because it broke it down to the county level. They had gone up a couple hundred people, and that was until, that ran through the middle of 2019. So, you know, I, I'm not here to tell you one way or the other.
Yeah, sure.
But if the numbers come out.
Sure.
So.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your report. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Flannery? There's no questions. Thank you for the report, and I appreciate you coming and taking the long trip from Johnson City.
Thank y'all for having me. Appreciate it.
Please be safe going home. Item number four, hazardous mitigation, Mr. Rebecca Clayton.
The mayor just wanted me to update you on where we had, I really don't have an update, just we have all forgot about it. We did, like, apply for the grant around July the second of 2020, and in March of 2020, you adopted the Hazard Mitigation Plan. So this past February twenty-third, FEMA finally approved the Hazard Mitigation Plan. So it took them one year to approve the Hazard Mitigation Plan. So maybe July, they might approve our Hazard Mitigation Grant application.
Is there any questions for Ms. Clayton? Any questions? No questions, thank you, Ms. Clayton. Item number five, international code updates, Mr. Christian Mansell.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Gordon Alderman. This is just to update, every seven years, our international codes come into play, and we, we have to update every seven years. I know it's still saying, you know, we're, we're moving to 2018s, which is next in line. They already have the 2021s out, but. Uh, I know I was still saying, you know, we're, we're moving to twenty-eighteens, which is next in line. They already have the twenty-twenty ones out, but, uh, we're just not prepared to, to move that far ahead at this time. So what we're looking at doing is updating all of our codes intact while we have them written out there. So if you have any questions about what we're doing, leave it on me.
So, uh, uh, he's worked on these, uh, twenty-eight, eighteen international code updates. So we went through all the departments of the city and, and all the department heads that signed off on this, uh, code, especially the ones that this directly affects. Uh, and everybody signed off on them and, um, uh, we just need the approval to pass the twenty-eighteen international codes that will be enforced by Mr. Mansell. Motion made by Alderman Leinford.
Second.
Second by Alderman Speck. Any discussion? All for the motion, let it know with a saying aye.
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 All opposed, like aye. Motion passed. Thank you, Mr. Mansell.
Yes, sir.
Item number six is resuming the Crowder property. This is, was brought, uh, uh, before the, uh, committee last Monday night, and it, it did pass the, uh, committee. Uh, so, it's an order to resuming the Crowder property, uh, located at the intersection of Church Street and, uh, willing bypass.
Mr. Mayor, just one quick thing. The camera is now pointing at the ceiling.
Rebecca, can you turn it around?
Right.
Yes, sir. Shame on you. Christian Mansell did that. Yeah, thank you. Alright. Okay, let's see. So we got a motion made by David, Alderman David Leinford. Uh, is there a second?
You plug the speakers back in.
Is there, is there a second? Kim, did you second that?
And we will have his.
Second, okay, second, uh, second by Vice Mayor Ken Dotson. Any discussion? All for the motion, let it know with a saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like aye. Motion passes. Item number seven is, uh, to add, uh, a Champion seven-ten grader, uh, to the city auction. Uh, if you remember, I brought forth the list of, uh, auction and, and, uh, street market supervisor, uh, says we have two, uh, and this one will need to be sold at public auction.
Motion approved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Ken Dotson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Speck. Any discussion? All for the motion, let it know with a saying aye.
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 All opposed, like aye. Motion passed. Item number eight, Airport Self-Service Fueling Station Bid, Mr. Jason Duke.
I have two items, everyone. Uh, the first item is approval of the Airport Committee. That's a two-year term, starting in twenty-twenty-one through twenty-three. Should have a list of those members. Uh, there are twelve people on that list. It'll be myself as chairman. I guess I've been on the board now for twenty years. Jason Cogan is also the pilot's vice chair. Al Beardsley, pilot. Overton County Executive Ben Tanner. Pilot Warren Jansen. Pilot James Sales. Uh, Livingston Alderman, Kim Dotson, and Chris Speck. Chamber of Commerce Director Shannon Cantrell. Overton County Commissioner Robbie Melton. Pilot Reggie Robertson. And Overton County Budget Director, County Commission Connie Wood.
Alright, there is a recommendation by the Airport Committee, the Chairman Jason Duke, uh, to approve these names in the Airport Committee. Motion made by, uh, Alderman Rex Dell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman David Leinford. Any discussion? All for the motion, let it know with a saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like aye. Next, Mr. Duke.
Item two is the approval of a new fuel kiosk for the airport, which is our credit card reader. Uh, our current terminal is ten years old. It does not read chip cards, so we're paying a surcharge for standard scans cards. Also has an issue with debit card pens. Uh, this is not your standard credit card reader. This has to be on the elements. It also lets you select between jet fuel and hundred-octane low lead. It captures airplane information, and it communicates this one with a cellular, our current one is on landline. So we achieved, we have, we're going to get a ninety percent grant on this. It is budgeted. We took bids on this. The little bid is eighteen thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. It sounds like a lot, but this is not just a credit card scanner. This is the actual entire terminal itself that dispenses fuel. Uh, so it would be a five percent match from the city of Livingston and five percent from Overton County. So the total amount would be nine hundred and five dollars and thirty-four cents. We'll recoup that in approximately three months of lower credit card fees from being able to not pay the upcharge on chip cards and debit card pens. And the little bid was from Rebel Services, Ripley, Mississippi.
Conferred recommendation from the chairman. Is there a motion to accept that bid?
To accept that bid.
Second.
Got a motion by, uh, Vice Mayor Dotson. Second by Alderman Kelly Cullen. Any discussion? All for the motion, let it know with a saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like aye. Motion passed. Any other business? Mr. Duke?
Uh, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number nine is appoint Miss Cynthia Julian Simmons to the DZA Committee, replacing Mr. Charles Maynard. Mr. Maynard, uh, advised that, uh, he was ready to slow down just a little bit and, uh, just, uh, just decided that, uh, let someone else do it. I had talked to Miss Simmons. Uh, and, uh, she is, uh, okay with being appointed to this board. I think she'll be a, a good asset to the board. Also, I think Mr. Charles Williams did an outstanding job, uh, serving his community on this board. So I just need a motion to accept Miss Cynthia Simmons, uh, to be on the DZA, replacing Charles Maynard. Motion made by Alderman Chris Speck. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Rex Dell. Any discussion?
I want to thank Charles Maynard for the time he served.
Thank you for the record. Chris Speck wants to thank, uh, Mr. Charles Maynard. Uh, all for the motion, let it know with a saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like aye. I'm still handed out today for the ones that's not there. I would get it due, but it is the audit report. Uh, each Alderman will have one, and if they don't have one, they will have one tomorrow. Okay, so, uh, for review. That's all the business I got, and I need a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Vice Mayor Ken Dotson. Second by Alderman Chris Speck. Any discussion? All for the motion, let it know with a saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like aye. We're adjourned.